And so M A P C and Alexis prepared three work products. One is a best practices memo. The second is a, how do they call it? Feasibility analysis. And the third is an intermunicipal agreement. They provided these for informational or information to us. Just to back up the, you know, this is where the genesis is talking about how we could be more supported as planners. Housing regulations in Massachusetts are complicated and can often require a high level of expertise. We've always been fortunate when we've needed it. We were able to get it through Community Opportunities Group and most recently Jen Golson. But sometimes what we, we don't know what we don't know. And there's been a couple of instances over the past year where I think that being a member of an organization like this could be beneficial. Not only in just the organizational aspect of the Affordable Housing Trust as we move into our hopefully post 10% life, but also in circumstances like requiring monitoring and compliance with our LIP units. And also the recent inquiry from David Cashman about the annual affordable rent increases. So I'll have Alexis outline the, the concept and we can talk more about it after we hear from her.
All right, welcome Alexis.
Right, great. Thank you to the select board or to the Board of Selectmen for having me here tonight. And thanks, thanks Sarah for the introduction. I am going to, if I do a screen share, can you all, will you all be able to see the screen? All right, great. I'm going to do a quick screen share just so you can look at something, something that's not just, not just me while, while I'm talking here. Let's see, is that visible to everyone? Yes. So I'm going to run through this really quick, a little quickly. But you know, feel, feel free to ask any questions or you flag anything as, as I go through this, whatever makes sense. So I shouldn't, I shouldn't choose myself. My name's Alexis Smith. I'm a Principal Housing Planner with M A P C, which is the regional planning agency for the 101 communities in Greater Boston, more or less within 495. And as Sarah said, I'm here tonight to talk about this, a shared housing services office or a regional housing services office. People call them a bunch of different things. First, I'm going to give a brief overview of where and how these exist already. This is not the first, or I guess I'll, I'll get into, you know, as Sarah said, this, this became of interest for towns who don't necessarily have the need or the capacity to hire a full-time housing coordinator, but who do need very specialized housing services that a town planner who wears many hats, you know, might just might not have experience in. It's kind of, it's a way to allow access to this expertise without committing to hiring a planner and to just kind of have that expertise, you know, on, on board and on call. There are three of these that exist already in Eastern Massachusetts. One, the, the first one is over 10 years old at this point. It's based out of Concord and has nine or 10 participating communities. Shortly after that, one based out of Hudson was formed in kind of Metro North. And then another, a second one that's also kind of serving Metro West was formed that's based out of Reading. And so this would be the, the fourth in, in Greater Boston. The South Shore, some communities on the South Shore were also considering something along these lines. So it's, it's not, it's not a new concept that this has been tested. Let's see. The primary purpose of these is to monitor a municipality's stock on the subsidized housing inventory. Sarah just mentioned Medfield's getting towards 10%, which is great. Particularly when towns start to get a substantive, you know, a substantive, a number of units on the inventory. It's, it's a good thing to make sure that those units aren't lost. It's, that can happen. And or in primary and also more importantly, just to, you know, make sure that these units are functioning the way that they're supposed to. That involves annually checking up on rental units, certifying compliance of rental tenants. It means when a, when an ownership unit is up for resale, guiding the, the seller through that process and ensuring that a new low-income or eligible homeowner purchases the unit. That's a big one, a lot of, that's a very complicated process to ensure the continuity of the deed restriction. And there are communities who sometimes just, you know, lose, lose, lose units that way, which is what no one wants when they're right around 10% on their S H I. And that also is just an affordable unit that is a resource for the community that, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to see lost. Again, it just makes sure that, you know, the town works so hard to get all of these affordable units in place. It makes sure that the units that are in place are functioning as they're supposed to. That's certainly not the only thing that one, that, that one of these agency or organizations does. It can do, you know, in, in the existing ones, they, they do home administration for eligible communities. Program management, you know, in some communities in the past two or three, well, two years, they have been the ones to kickstart a rental assistance program using pandemic, pandemic funds, project-specific support. A common use of one of these is to say, is you, when you're getting a 40B project in, to, to rely on the R H S O staff to say, okay, this is the, these are the analysis we're doing. This is the paperwork we're doing and making sure that project, project flows smoothly. So it doesn't sap all of the, the energy from your, from your housing planner. And also, and lastly, to support town staff and local committees. Most commonly a housing trust. To, you know, and, and, you know, as they are, housing trusts are amazing resource, are amazing resources. And a lot of times they have great ideas and this is somebody to help them execute those great ideas who has professional experience. They're guided by what's called an intermunicipal agreement, which I believe Sarah distributed a draft copy to you. That essentially it's a, it's a, it's a document that's enabled by the, by state law. And that outlines specifically what the, what the organization would be doing. You know, what fees, what the fees are and how, and how those fees are adjusted depending on, you know, what's actually used. Provides oversight and just lays out responsibilities so that everyone is, you know, the responsibilities are clear and that it's a, so that the, the sharing of resources occurs relatively seamlessly. There is a lead municipality, as Sarah mentioned, Hopkinton has stepped up to be that for this group. They essentially, they're the ones that issue a contract with the service provider. So Medfield and the other communities would, you know, would not have a direct contract, but they would be, but through the intermunicipal agreement would, would, they would be contracting with the service provider. Lead community sets up a revolving fund and makes payments and just generally oversees the, the service provider to make sure that they're, you know, doing what they're supposed to do. So for this, that's how they function generally across, you know, all the three communities that, or the, excuse me, the three organizations that exist in Eastern Massachusetts already. This, looking at this S H S O specifically that is getting started for the trick and swap municipalities. The, I'm repeating what Sarah said, the, the, the subregions got together and said, you know, this is something we really think that we could, we could use. Norwood stepped up and applied for community compact funds from the state to support the, the development of this, the, the technical expertise involved. And so I am working with Liz Russ, who is, was part of the founding of that first S H S O out of Concord, 20, 10 years down. So we've got a lot of good experience in the room. This is just a, you know, a break. We've spent a lot of time working with the, the, the planners in the municipality to say, all right, what do you need? Does that, how does that align? You know, let's make sure that your goals, that this is, that this is something that makes sense, that your goals are lined up, that your needs, that, you know, this is actually going to meet your needs and not going to be something that we're just doing for the sake of doing. And so just a kind of a quick synopsis of where we've been. The project started a year ago with us just doing a lot of interviews and research into what these existing three have already done and kind of taking away lessons learned. Last spring and end of the summer, we worked with communities to determine whether this was, would be a potential good fit with them. And then for the communities that were interested, moved into looking at a more deep dive into what their, what their needs are and then how that would translate into a budget and a scope for the S H S O. We are right now getting prepared to release an R F P for a service provider. And then we'll head into, you know, funding and approvals and hopefully adopting the I M A and kicking things off in the beginning of the next fiscal year. So again, I'll just repeating what Sarah said, there are eight towns involved of Bellingham, Hopkinton, Medfield, Milton, Norwood, Randolph, Sharon, and Rentham. Just to give you, this is going to, this probably makes you go cross-eyed, but just to give you an idea of the work that's gone into this. We interviewed staff from all of the participating towns, went through a really, really detailed culling of the, their, their subsidized housing inventory. Not just, oh, you have this many units, you're, you have, you know, 9.6%, but, okay, how many of those are local action units? How many of those are ownership? How many of those are all affordable rental versus, you know, 40Bs? Like who's, who's the monitoring agent? Like pulling in a lot of information to, to really make sure that we're making an informed, an projection of how much, you know, what monitoring for the S H I will, will entail. And also what other programs are needed or what other services are needed, excuse me. From there, we drafted a, you estimate at number of hours that would be required for each of these towns and came up with a, you know, an overall draft budget for, for the, the future S H S O. These, the Trick Swap S H S O will have services similar to, to, you know, what we've already discussed in the existing ones. Monitoring will be a primary one, particularly ownership units, which is something that planners in these subregions have consistently flagged as, as being a challenge. The, this S H S O will also focus on program development. There's been a fair amount of interest in saying, all right, yeah, we, we want to start a homeownership assistance program or a rental assistance program. And also board meeting support for the housing trusts and, you know, consulting in projects on an as-needed basis. This is a snapshot of what we've projected for Medfield's services.
Hey Alexis, I'm sorry to interrupt. I've been thinking for a while that you think that the screen is actually going through our presentation. We are still seeing the title slide.
I'm so sorry. Well, there's so much, so much for, you know, so much for you having something more interesting to look at. I apologize. I don't know what happened there. Can you see, can you see that spread? I, I am so, so sorry. Well, I will email this to Sarah as she can pass it along to you all. There was not much content beyond what I've verbalized. I was just including it so that you could focus on something instead of my, my head the whole time. This is the most important one to see. This is how we're estimating Medfield's hours, hours would play out. Medfield actually has a very robust number of units on its inventory. And within that, there's a lot of, let's say more, more complicated units to monitor. You know, there are some towns that are close to 10%, but that 10% on the subsidized housing inventory is just in two 40B projects run by, you know, by a major, major management company who kind of know what they're doing and who can keep this going. Medfield has a lot of unique projects that just require a lot more, more monitoring than in some other towns, which is why, you know, these, these, this top column under the, the, the monitoring is, is, you know, it's a fair amount of hours. Medfield has also suggested that program development hours would be useful and in particular, support for the, the housing trust would be useful as well as just providing general support for residents. You know, a lot of folks get calls or, you know, field inquiries and having a one-stop, you know, central expert to, to refer folks to is many towns find that useful. So that's what we're projecting. This is a projection. It is not necessarily what Medfield will end up using. There are in the intermunicipal agreement guidelines for how to even, how to even hours out at the end of the year. If the town opts not to use all of those hours, then there's a, you know, there, there's a way to, to, to tally, tally the balance so that, that the town will not be asked to pay for anything that it doesn't use. And it will, you know, be okaying hours as it, as it goes along. Just to give you a snapshot of what the other towns are anticipating. Hopkinton is at the high end of the, the request, which so it makes sense that they're stepping in as the lead community. Down to, you know, some towns in the Rentham and Norwood have really just said, you know, we have small subsidized housing inventories, but we really want to make sure that someone is actively monitoring them. And so, you know, that's, that's a kind of what the, the communities we're seeing on the lower end of services are, are looking for. Next steps are, we are, you know, participating towns are making funding requests right now. Most are either or have made requests, most either through the, through their CPA funds, if those are available or through as a line item in the town budget. We are just, you know, at, at this point, the planners are having conversations with folks just to make sure that, you know, they're on board with the, the general idea. In the next couple of weeks, we're going to be releasing an R F P for a service provider who will be the one to actually, you know, execute these services. All the towns will vote on, the, 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 the line item will be included in the town, will, in the town budget and voted on at town meeting or voted on at town meeting as part of the CPA allotment. And then once funds are allocated formally, then we will, we'll be, you know, seeking the select board to sign on to the intermunicipal agreement. So right now, the, the goal is just to, you know, see, in addition to the funding request, it's just to see if folks have questions, you know, what, 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 what can we provide to answer any, any uncertainties you might have, fill any gaps and just, you know, make sure that we're, we're answering those upfront and, you know, getting you whatever information you need. So that is all I have, all two of the slides that ended up actually showing. But I will, I, I, I will see if, if folks have any questions either now or if, as you're digesting the materials, if something comes up. Of course, please feel free to reach out to Sarah and she can pass them on to me, whatever, whatever, whatever works. So happy for any questions.
Thank you very much. I guess my question would be, I think this is an excellent idea. I think that we've, we've been overdue in needing this for quite a while now. So I'm happy that we're getting it. Is it going to be provided Alexis by a, a group or a, a one person?
That depends. If, if, I don't know who is going to respond to the R F P. We, we have, we, you know, know that there's, there's, there's people who do this, you know, are, are exist in the region. Of the three existing ones, one of them is, they're, they're structured different ways. One of them is actually hired by the lead community, a single person hired by the lead community as a staff. Hopkinton is not interested in doing that. They don't have the space, so that will not be the model here. One of the existing ones has a single consultant or a single person who they've hired as a consultant. And then one or, or, you know, I should say a couple of people who they've hired independently as a consultant. And then one, and then the third one has actually hired a, a group, a housing nonprofit that is able to do this sort of thing. And so it just, it depends on who's interested in what the needs are. But the, the short answer is it, it, it could be either.
All right. Thank you.
Man, trapped for a second. I think one thing that we didn't say was Medfield's approximate tally is about $20,000. So that would be what this requested for. I'm sorry, what? Does she have, yes, okay, 16. Okay.
The 16 is an estimate based on an assumed hourly rate, but we don't know what the, what folks are going to come back with. You know, we, we can't put a totally firm number on it until we have a proposal from a service provider. So, so I've encouraged communities to request, you know, a little up above the estimate in case, you know, we, we get high, high bids.
Yeah, a couple of, for a second, the presentation and the explanation. Just a couple, one, Hopkinton is the lead community. Does that mean, well, is Hopkinton providing a physical location for this provider? Or what does it mean to be a lead community?
It means in some, in some of the existing ones, the lead community does provide office space. Hopkinton has just said they don't have any available. So we're, we're, we're just making it clear on the R F P that the consultant will have to work out of, you know, whatever offices they have. It means that Hopkinton will be the town that has the contract with the service provider. So all of the towns in the S H S O are entitled to receive the services from the service provider, but Medfield won't have a direct contract with them. It's just a, a, a much cleaner way to, to do it. Hopkinton will also, as part of their warrants, or, you know, they will set up a, a revolving fund. Also, also, you know, a fund enabled by mass general law that will receive the payments from all the participating communities and then distribute those payments to the service provider. And additionally check to make sure that the service provider is, you know, doing the things that they've built for in the way that any town would oversee any, any, any consultant that they've hired.
That leads to my next question. I am assuming this would be a multi-year contract that would be let out for the provider?
Yeah, we're structuring it as a three-year contract. All of the existing ones do either two years or three years. Are the, 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 Liz Russell, the one we've been working with, who is part of, you know, one of these has suggested that three years is the right way to go, particularly at the outset, because this is essentially, when you take all eight towns together, this is essentially the equivalent, the equivalent of a half-time employee. And so if an organization is, you know, interested in doing something like this, there will be some amount, some degree of staffing up on their part. You know, also just getting familiar with the towns. The first year, this is really just going to be going through all the town's inventories with a fine-tooth comb and figuring out what's what. You know, they'll probably have to go to, you know, this, this, we spend a lot of time digging up the old deed restrictions and finding where they're, you know, what the particulars are of the, you know, 20-year-old deed restrictions that are, you know, when they're written differently than what they are now. So there, so we, we, I, I, I do recommend a three-year term. Just, there's not a whole lot of incentive for the provider to step up if they only have the guarantee that they're, you know, going to do this for one year. That being said, some towns have been like, well, what if, what if we just, what if we don't approve of the funds after a year? What if this is just absolutely not the right situation for us? There are provisions in the intermunicipal agreement for if a town wishes to bow out prior to that three years. It's just easiest from a contracting perspective. And, you know, in terms of getting the provider up and running to start with three years.
Okay. And you got to have in front of me on my next question. I was trying to think, for us thinking about this, we probably should think about it in good faith. If it's a three-year contract, we ought to be thinking about it in three-year commitment. Maybe there's some ways for us to escape from that, but the bottom line is we really should be thinking about that with Hopkinton. If you move ahead for your contract, that's how we should be thinking about it.
Yeah, the benefit is over time. That as, you know, in 18 months, when Sarah gets a notification that a unit, an affordable homeownership unit is going to be sold, then, you know, that, that's, it's, it's as, as those turn in, then that's, that's where the benefit really starts to, to, to come in.
My last comment is just a nautical for anybody who cares. But I think, you know, over, over the past several years, there has been an informal regional selection group. I think largely had, largely coordinated out of that way. I think it was Pete. In one of the meetings that we had, these towns that were ahead of us on 40B were commenting about some of the horror stories they had with their for sale units because nobody was monitoring this stuff. Basically, you'd have people get an affordable unit, then some of the banks that aren't that sophisticated would then give them a conventional loan at a market price. But, you know, they refinance, but they refinance, you know, that the market price would be more good. And there was no closed loop. So I can easily see why something like this with a self-funded service provider could, could well be worth, but it's both a loss and it addresses. That's just what we had on that list.
I think, thank you, Alexis. I, I thought this was a good idea as well, especially where we're moving into a new stage. It was hopefully of this process where we're going to be looking to do some things that are not typical 40B. And we can get to that 10%. And excluding some of the other two housing, other goals where I just, for example, we're working on.
Hop. That was on my mind as this was percolating. Yeah.
Would have been helpful to have some people, as for Jean, Sarah and the people who, too. So I think it's useful.
And just to be clear, the Affordable Housing Trust did meet with Alexis last May. So they've been in the loop on this the whole time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it's Michael Taylor, New World. We've got Michael Taylor, Scotty, who's discussing the right early housing lease agreement.
Michael Taylor.
Is he in the Zoom?
Yes.
Is he not there either?
He is.
Okay.
Rejoining.
Welcome, Michael, from the world.
Good evening. What would you like to know? Okay, I'll start. Thank you for having us. And I'd like to say, I don't know if any of you have recently visited the house. I'd say in the past year, it's drastically different. I know all three of you have been passed it on your way to jail on Medfield Day. But stopping in, we'd welcome you. Since July 1 of 2020, the house has undergone a dramatic change. One of the most significant things is written up in the Hometown Weekly by Richard De Sorga, is the basement's dry. And that is a minor miracle. The house has been painted on three sides. The breezeway, the Derby Hall Edition, was actually power washed, scraped, sanded, primed and painted by volunteers. We have a new website. The, the things that were done professionally by vendors was the website, the PVC piping in the basement, the painting. We had track lighting put in the exhibit hall, so we were able to host art shows. What else have we done? We had, we had to replace the outside spotlights. We had to replace the batteries for the emergency lighting. We have new downspouts. We have a new, we have a wireless fire and alarm system. We have Mike Taylor cleaning the gutters.
And don't forget Eva Pot's kitchen.
I haven't gotten to the interior yet. The Butler's pantry, which was a complete disaster. I have pictures of the before, but I'm not going to display them to you. If you're going to see them someday, I'll be happy to show them. But what it looks like now is it's spectacular. And all of the two ladies that are here, even Sherry, were the key people who, again, all the cabinets were scraped, sanded, primed. The fixtures were taken off and it took two hours for each fixture to be cleaned. The floor was painted, the grates were painted, the electrician put in GFC outlets. We have a stove, we have a range and we have a new refrigerator. That was from the, there was a dedicate, there was a fundraiser for that years ago. And there was $3,500 towards this, what they had planned for a $30,000 kitchen. And these ladies did it for $3,000. We've been lucky that many things have been donated and volunteers have done many things. And we're at the end where we can do work like that. Oh, and we've sifted, there were three piles left from the dig under the breezeway 20 plus years ago that we inherited. Two of those piles have been sifted and the soil distributed on the property, which is required for historical reasons. We have one large pile to go and it's a lot of fun, just like Mark Twain said. So if anyone wants to show up, we have three screens to sift. We'll give you a pizza party on the patio. And the house has been staged historically. So I really, I really wish you would all come by and see it. We, at Christmas time, we had 76 children come to see Mr. and Mrs. Santa. Mrs. Santa's sitting in the audience. And Medfield Day, we had over 200 people come through the house. So it's, it's come a long way from where, from where we were. Michael?
Yeah, so, so just to, you know, the, the purpose of the meeting today is just to renew the lease. The initial lease was, it was signed on February 24th, 1998. Lasted 10 years with an automatic 10-year extension that brought us up, up through 2018. And now we're on a. And now we're on a, technically a month to month, there are some initial provisions in the lease that applied to goals that the Dwight Derby House had to do the, the initial few years. Just as a, for further background information, initially, when the Dwight Derby House came up for sale, the Historical Society, I was a treasurer of the Medfield Historical Society at the time, and we really wanted to try to raise money and try to save that house. But the Historical Society had a ten-thousand-dollar budget, and so we created the Friends of the Dwight Derby House. And the deal was the town was to buy the house, which it did. And the Friends of the Dwight Derby House would raise the monies to, to fix it up. And so during the first nine years, we raised three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, or about forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars a year. The, so the, the, we, we are on a month-to-month lease now, and we made some provisions or changes to the initial lease, just basically update it to put us on another ten-year, ten-year track. In October two thousand and twenty, we gave a, a marked-up version of a lease, and we're waiting for the town to respond to it. It's relatively straightforward. Mark, I don't know if you have had any comments on the lease itself, and maybe it's not productive to review it at, at the Board of Slough meeting today, but we would like to continue and commit to the initial intent, which was the Friends of the Dwight Derby House will continue to maintain the house and preserve it for the future benefit of the town.
I know that we've had some conversations, but the board's, you know, inclined to renew what we've expected with the and we can partner on that and raise the taxes. Didn't know if you had any questions at this stage.
I think it's a partnership will work very well for the town. It makes sense for the town to renew the lease and.
I, I can't really hear anything you're saying, but I'm sure it's good things.
It is good things.
That's, it doesn't depend on your perspective, how people. Yeah, just for the, just for the record, I have this at the Dwight Derby House, but I would only add, I do it on Medfield Day. It was my first time there. I, to be honest, I spent more time getting an in-depth discussion of the things that were in your barn in the back than I did in the front. But I, I learned a lot, saw a lot, and none of that would have happened had Pete not failed to have a sale, so. I'm in favor of this, obviously. One of the, one of the great things about this town is that there are people who care about its history and are willing to put, design an effort into preserving that history, so for sure. Inflation would be to even, to renew the lease under the current terms.
Gus, on that, on that mark, since it's, we've been in operation for twenty-six years, we've had forty-one board member volunteers. Some people come back for more. Richard De Sorga is now a member. This is his third time he's come back. But we, so forty-one members over twenty-six-year period. A few years ago, we only had three board members. We now have nine. So with with the number of potential members supporting the cause, many hands may make light work.
And I'd like to just point out that the barn has never been open before as part of the museum.
Yeah, so I, I've had the draft lease for a while. There was an issue during our preliminary discussions about the friends who are looking for the town to take over more of the maintenance expenses associated with the property. I just quickly looked at this draft and it appeared that that you were going to retain those responsibilities.
That's correct. A, a few years ago, the philosophy of the Friends of the Dwight Derby House was that, hey, this is the town's property, maybe they should be paying for the upkeep and the maintenance. But certain members like myself, remember what the initial agreement was twenty-six years ago, felt that that wasn't particularly fair. So we, we purposely increased the number of board members. We, we've cranked up our fundraising efforts, and we think we, we can do it. Now, having said all that, we certainly do appreciate the support that we continue to get through some of the town-sponsored organizations.
I do have a current certificate of insurance, if you'd like it. I did bring that.
Oh, yeah, if I had, if I had been able to attend this, this meeting, I had a check for twelve dollars, which cut, which covered the rent for the last twelve years. So far, we've given you two checks. The first check was for thirteen dollars, twelve years ago, and then we'll be current once we give you our twelve-dollar check.
So I'll see you first thing in the morning tomorrow then?
Well, if you haven't been paying the rent on a monthly basis, that's your problem. Well, there's this whole period you've been squandering this over. Only because this discussion. Does any of the, you know how some of the ARCA fundings have a fairly broad application? I've never really thought about lately, not-for-profit organizations that potentially were hurt by COVID. Do we, is that, you know, I'm thinking whether it could be donations, could be other, other things. Is that within the zone? Okay. Okay.
That's, that's the easy one.
Sorry, well, I tried.
Is there anything else? All right, well, I'm gonna assume you know, you can't hear. All right, well, we have world, we're gonna do world's appointment. Actually, I'm going to appoint Lord Scotty to the council agent, to fill the remainder of Perry Constitution Firm, expiring June thirty.
Go speak to him. I moved it to be appoint Lord Scotty to the Medfield Council on Aging to fill the remainder of Perry Constitution Firm, expiring June thirty.
That's all in favor? Congratulations. All right, next item, review and discussion of the articles for the three point two of the annual meeting, potential votes for the new president of Moore, and closing, we're meeting this year at North Street, we discussed the body of the world.
No, it was really just to have a, I have draft copies that I will be reviewing later in language. But more to talk about, we have potential adding two articles.
Great. No, welcome.
Good evening. Just wanted to talk, kind of continue our discussion from last time regarding North Street. Looking at some of the costs and kind of a new revelation a little bit, but as far as costs, I mean, we talked about underground utilities, we talked about reconstruction and putting it out there. The original costs were between three and three point five million. We had the consultant look at it again, with current prices just keep rising and rising. We're anywhere right now, we, we are looking at, for a twenty-nine-foot roadway width, it would be about four point one million. For a thirty-two-foot width roadway, it would be four point six. With that being said, if we did underground utilities, Weston just did a job there. One of our consultants that did the job there, they did, the underground utilities for a mile worth of roadway was eight million dollars for the contractor to put all the underground infrastructure in. Two million dollars for EverSource on top of that, and another half a million between Verizon and Comcast. So if we do it relative to a mile, we're looking at about a half a mile here. So it would be about a five, about a five million dollar just for the underground utilities. So we're just bringing out the costs, just to, to show how, how expensive or inexpensive.
Does that, does that get paid?
It's a one, it's a one-time, yes. No, no. It took the town of Weston about six years from beginning to end, but that was for the, the mile of construction. For, if we did underground utilities, my estimate would be about three to four years, depending on, you know, how EverSource responds to, to something like that. You talk about, we would need easements or concessions for, you know, different things that come across as we go from James Avenue to Pine Street. That's the, the location we're talking about. So my feeling, you know, I, I would recommend that we give it a little time for the prices to come down. I mean, I'm not sure if, you know, how long that would take. I would like to repave the road, put a surface treatment on it for the time being, like we talked about before. I think a six-to-ten-year surface treatment would be, you know, a, a reality. We could get it to that point, so that, to the ninety thousand dollars. I think to, with the prices still, still reaching, haven't reached the top yet, with fuel, the oil prices going up, you know, the asphalt content is what we, we have to worry about, the contractors' prices. With all the infrastructure coming in, with all the contractors being wanted to do work, I think the prices are going to continue to, to rise. I think if we give it a couple of years, give it time, get up, get it paved, give it time for the, for things to relax. That would be my recommendation, but, and not bring it to town meeting at this time.
So basically, it just adds the difference between the two, the thirty-two-foot long way. Would give you essentially a bike lane?
They, they would both be bike lanes, the shoulders would be, the, the travel lanes would be a little bit narrower. So, yeah, so thirty-two-foot, we two, two eleven-foot lanes, two five-foot shoulders for bike lanes, and two five-foot sidewalks, both on both sides. Correct. Just until, I, I think, I think because the prices are so high, I think that to put it to town meeting, I think we're, we're looking at a bad time to do it. I think, I mean, we could do it still in a couple of years if it's still the same price, but we're hoping that with, with COVID, I guess relaxing a little bit, and the prices, once people get back to work and with the economy improves, hopefully the prices will, will go down, so.
And it's one thing to have a, you know, three and a half million dollars.
For a short period, for a short track too.
It would be a nice thing to have. It would make my life easier, but we have to, we traded through the standard with regular power energy.
I practically considered it, and I do have a memo on the process. Ultimately, the rate payers and the entire town pick it up. Not even the rate payers, it's just in the area affected, it's spread out over the whole town. By the chat.
Not now, but the town of Weston. We call the model of the Weston, that it's an upfront cost, not a surcharge on that.
I've heard it done both ways, but, but looking at Weston, the consultant that did the presentation had done the, the work for Weston, and I've talked to their engineers directly about all the prices that, that they did pay out.
Why did they go that route to person, Rachel?
I'm, I'm not sure. I can, I can follow up. Right, exactly.
All those that was related, because they were doing the bombing, that they wanted to pay all upfront.
Their total project, I believe, is sixteen, seventeen million across the whole mile, including the underground utilities.
Do you have a sense of, if we were to do it, which section, how, how much we would have? If we needed to do that. You're talking to North Street, you're like from?
James Ave to Pine Street right now.
It's not even from Starbucks.
No, so we're looking at, we're looking at developing the Route one oh nine corridor with the state. We're trying to get it on the transportation improvement program. We're going to be hopefully working on that this spring and summer. The thing is, that's a, we're looking to go from the town line at Millis all the way to Hartford Street. It's a fifteen-million-dollar project, so to speak, but to get the money from the state, I think we might have to do it in phases that we'd be able to get the money a lot sooner by do, by splitting up the job. It's just that, you know, you're inconvenienced for a while longer, you know, one time and then a time again, but they, I think they did it all in one shot, but they had, you know, it was three years, Mark, was, was it a three-year project?
That was really dragged out for a long.
Yeah, but, but for us to get fifty. It does. For us to get fifteen million dollars from the state is very hard for them to fund that large project. I think if we break it up into two sections, we'd be, be able to get funded sooner than, than later. Yeah. Unless you just did the downtown areas and broke it up that way. Yep.
Your recommendation is not to be concerned, not to be a part of our, essentially.
Surface treatment. Yeah.
Surface and parallel didn't get sidewalks.
No, looking at the sidewalks right now, there's one area where it's very flush to the ground. We could probably do something with that, with our, with our forces, maybe putting in a, an asphalt curb and bring it up a little higher so that becomes, you know, protect the sidewalk. The rest of it, I wouldn't spend the money on to, to reconstruct it until we're ready to do the whole project.
You might be surprised, but I like the ninety-thousand-dollar fix much better than the other ones. I guess I would recommend, go ahead and do that. Thank you for those numbers. I think the underground utility is a nice, but I'm sure it's still, I think it's part of the continent doing those.
Certainly based on your recommendation on this, Mo, I'm, I'm fine with going to the research. Hey, as you're talking about it, the thing that I think about is, I'm thinking about this project, the state project, and thinking about some of the resilience things that Sarah's working on, some of the other things that went down the town. I look at the progress we've made from a, from a, you know, business standpoint. This, buying, buying your argument about this is the wrong time, you said, my, I'm not, I'm not making the case to do that, but I do think in that longer term, maybe it's that six-to-ten-year timeframe, the answer to some of these things, I think we, we have to be thinking about all of these pieces. Because if all of those pieces get put in together in the right place, it seems to be able to sustain momentum on some of the economic progress, I think we may have relapsed over the years. You know, I, I drive through Millis every one, you know, fairly frequently, and it's like, gosh, you know, it's actually nice that it's that downtown stretch is nice, and it starts to, you know, if it starts to look nicer, then businesses come in, and then it might be a little bit easier, I guess, that's, that's me doing now. I get, I get what you're saying, but I, I do see that some of this is worth considering, what does it mean? But that underground utilities, I know people like them. It makes it look better, I'm not saying that necessarily happens, it's a stupid, but the piece of it, that's not even so much the most important as having something less than flush sidewalks and waste price, but.
I don't think those prices, those costs are going to change. I think it's the construction costs that will change, but I don't, I don't believe the underground utility costs will change that much.
Yeah, the only question would be, will we get, if, if the economic development in the downtown area continues, will we get to a point where even even the business community would say, you know, we've got some interest here. If we can upgrade this whole thing, you know, we see a benefit. And if we got there, and I'm saying this is a six-to-ten-year down the road kind of a thing.
Well, we, we discussed having, having a committee, put together a community committee with, you know, town officials, business owners, residents, to kind of put, put together and see the whole downtown as far as the corridor, trying to improve it, and what the state will pay, what the state and federal government won't pay.
That's, that would be the, you know, it is timeframe, yeah. Half a decade, decade up, maybe two decades up, but thinking about it, I think it would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, I think, Mo and I met, we talked about it, I think, you know, putting together a four or five week plan with underground facilities, that kind of policy setting, shut off the failure, how we're going to do some operations. Really have a good handle on. I know it will be disappointing some people without, but I think in terms of like this, and now along the time.
Well, I also think this is something that has returned to our next capital budget process. The reality is we've never really had the building, we've never done it, you have to get that roadwork, because the town generally had a policy or a practice that we would bond for that kind of work, we wouldn't combine, you know, so a lot of towns would combine four type projects, one three, five, two, five million dollar bond. Uh, we've never had the roadwork, had something to do with that, to get the size without it, so we just never had. Yeah, we, we, I mean, North Street's on the tip occasionally for a while, but as we were told, it couldn't be, you know.
Still on the tip. Right.
Um, we've, we've done a good job, we drive around town near us. Our roads are in better shape than a lot of the town. Not North Street right now.
Not North Street. And I, and I think also just the one more comment about North Street is that we were looking also to possibly in the future add the intersection of North Street and Harding Street, maybe in coordination with this project, so. No.
Uh, I just want to, well, we have the potential board to open annual town meetings.
Thank you.
So that's what we're looking to look in the first words.
I move that we open the town board.
Yes, we're just adding, um, as everybody knows, the middle school had a route, uh, we could, we need to, um, appropriate one to do that. We have some unextended bond funds from. Do a separate article rather than.
The bond council has been recommending it. All right, um, review town public letter, rate multi-film zoning that needs to be, communities, Bill. So thank you, Bill, for your comments on your, why don't Pete, have the digital comments and whatever. Um, you, you want to discuss any bills coming?
I, to be honest, we go ahead and pick.
I'll make it shorter than.
I think we reviewed, uh, a lot of Bill's comments and I think this letter is more letting the state know that we're unhappy with how they're doing three A and our comments on that. Those are more technical and what happened when three A moved forward. I met with Sarah today and there is, uh, if this doesn't factor before, there's technical assistance available from the state to answer all those questions that you were both.
I would. Microphone, sorry.
You have to go to the podium.
I'll, I'll talk to you, right?
Yeah.
Last paragraph. I told you, they have to go to podium. I'll send you. I'll send you an email. So do you want to vote to sign this or?
Move that we, uh, signed the, uh, letter to, uh, the family from the, of helping in economic development.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
All right, uh, next, um, discuss the potential sign, the political resume, the city, see, we're not. Next, vote to approve a contract with Kevin DeKet for tobacco compliance services.
This, oh, correct, I was gonna, this is, um, a contract, Mary Haas from, I think, the outreach department, for the health to do this as part of the grocery.
Do that question. It's funded by.
Yeah, it's coming from that.
No, the main, the main question I had, I looked at the, you know, and it's like, this is a new thing, if I read it right, it's like it requires once annual inspection. So I was questioning why we're adding that kind of services, just having somebody drop in on, you know, from the town or help and things like that.
That's, that's happening.
Okay, so the short answer is we've got our money that we're spending, it's small money anyway, so that's probably. All right. I got the motion, uh, move that we approve the contractor, Kevin DeKet for tobacco compliance services.
Thanks, Paul Jaber. Right next, want to approve employment agreement with fire chief, William Jericho, one-year agreement, attracted July first, one, and three-year agreement beginning July first, twenty-one.
They move that we approve, uh, uh, gotta do about ten times over the board, twenty-one year. Uh, the employment agreements with fire chief, Will, William Jericho, first, the one-year agreement retroactive July first, twenty-one, followed by a three-year agreement beginning July first, twenty-two.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
And I'll just note, uh, on behalf of the board, that we're very grateful that have Chief Jericho sticking around. It's been a few years, I think he's done an excellent job in taking over the department and managing the transition and that services. Uh, in particular, his pursuit of grants has been extraordinary, I mean, you've seen so many things that have been on tackle budget for fire departments. Have been plenty by the grant that he pursued, I think there's an entire grant out there even after. That's been a huge, huge help, we've got a lot of equipment that we also thank you to. Uh, next, uh, vote to approve the memorandum agreement for July first, twenty-two, June third, twenty-five. If Metfield permanent firefighting utilization level four-four-seven-eight, IAFF, F, C, L, C, I. Someone's questioning discussion.
Motion. In my case, I will acknowledge, I haven't read this yet, so as long as you're okay with it, uh, I thought it was a very careful, I'm sending it in. Will you get that also, please? I'm, I'm happy to move ahead to the terms, because I, I trust you, I would know about any of these.
Good, nothing's changed since I presented it, uh, during the session.
Okay. Yes, I move that we approve the memorandum agreement for July first, twenty-two, June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, and Metfield Firefighters Association Local forty-four-seven-eight, IAFF, F, C, L, C, I.
Just for clarification, this is not approving the contract, this is approving in town meeting and town meeting.
All in favor?
All right, we vote.
Right, vote to sign the health insurance rule for this year, twenty-three.
Yes, this is a three and a half percent, uh, increase across all of our, um, plans that we offer.
Seventy-five, oh, last year or two years ago?
Last year they went down, uh, twenty-six percent and we also offered the premium holiday, uh, folks to the town to be employed. Now we're at a full twelve months this year.
Got it, okay. Uh, move that we approve, uh, signing the health insurance rule for this year, twenty-three.
Second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Comment, send agenda, G video requests, four sites, three locations. The advertising Daffodil Bay slash Berry House Walk from March twenty-fifth to April tenth. The event is on Saturday, April nineteenth, with the rain date of Sunday, April tenth. Location, one night horseshoe, transportation, present. Special, special.
Move that we approve, G Neo's request for Sandy Ford's site, three locations to advertise the Daffodil Bay's Berry House Walk from March twenty-fifth to April tenth. That on Saturday, April ninth, with the rain date of Sunday.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
We vote. Uh, meeting minutes. I have gotten through some of these. If anyone's gotten through all of them, all of these, I would prefer you had to approve. I've probably gotten through, through at least like December twenty-second.
You're ahead of me.
I got through your first five. All right, do you want to do the first five?
Yeah, uh, um, so, well, let's do the first, my comments are, the first four were fine, there's minor edit, one, one of them was okay. The other ones have minor edits from me. Uh, the one. Yeah, uh, the one that I was, I disallocated the time because I did that on Sunday and said, okay, these are fine. I'll do, yeah, I did four and it took like ten minutes piece.
You guys made twenty-six?
I got to make twenty-six, but that's not ready to find time, that one I don't think we're ready to approve. Um, you'll see all my comments, but the biggest, my, my biggest reaction, I spent over an hour on that. That's me, which was, and I know that's what I was getting involved in, I wouldn't have, I would have spent more time on all the other stuff you did today. Um, that was one that needed to be approved right by someone, because what I spent an hour on it is sort of mechanical edits for certain par, certain paragraphs or sentences, some of which were quoting what I had said. And I couldn't even guess what I actually really did say by what was written there, so I couldn't even reword it. Uh, because it didn't give me enough of a clue what the real words for it said, so. You've got, for that one, you have all my comments, you have, you know, edits where I could put things. Um, that he that I think is from the past, not to the future, but, or not, not where we are now. But the rapid shifting between first and third person, sometimes in the same sentence. I didn't even try to fix those before, I just said, uh, somebody reading that actually two years ago, they'll be able to figure out what we meant. Um, I had put some commas in place in the sense it said, because I couldn't, it took me a while, it said, meant, so I put the commas right. But that one's not ready, my mind, the first four are ready with minor edits, that's kind of.
But I will say on that one, Gus, that I had the same reaction and, and I was looking at it and I was here to mine is the decision of Judge Roden, case I once had, which he pointed out that the parties filed in the motion, the waterman, all looking in. Um, and he, he wrote that he wasn't going to address certain of the issues, uh, indifference and mortality ban. That's how I felt at the minute, so you brought that over, Gus, I, I, I'll, I'll get it at this point, I was looking at it, I'm like, you know what, I, no way I can get through those.
For the record, I did catch one endorsement that you didn't correct. There was one.
Well, I will say, I, I did a little bit of thinking, like, is, is endorsement a thing, is it some sort of technical legislative?
I did say the thing, but I don't think it is.
No, no, it's not, but I thought maybe endorsement would.
Cause there is another word, I just like to use in legislation, it's not engrossed, gross.
Engrossed, yes, and what does that mean?
Uh, prove by the house. See, so it's, so, so that, but this probably was an endorsement because of the volume, the accident of one. This is what's great about having some of these, so when we change to endorsement, do we make the next worse, or should we have left it being gross? Just sounds so gross.
I think endorsement.
That's what I'm saying, so it is a blessing.
I think for us, they, yeah.
No matter was, but I wouldn't.
Maybe that's correct, I mean, you know, there were others.
A little more civilized, but I think.
All right, so we're gonna, for, can we get a motion approved July thirty, February twenty-seven? So moved. Sorry, Paul Jaber?
Hi.
We vote, unless we can report till next week. All right, um, next meeting day, town history update day.
Uh, we have scheduled a conference, Mary, fifteen, for April seventh at seven PM at four o'clock.
April seventh, seven PM. Uh, next meeting day, March twenty-second, twenty-two, next week, uh, so I can look. Uh, I went to the energy committee and they're busy as ever, I took minutes, I can do, do you know exactly what they were doing, but, um, you have mental foundation in that, and that's it.
Uh, a couple of things, the Memorial Day parade, uh, court, courtation meeting took place, uh, last Wednesday. Uh, they're varying the routes, in the sense because the league is not there anymore, so it's a regular parade this year. Starts like normally, then Baxton Park moves us to the cemetery. The only difference in the route is that we'll be coming in on Dale Street and going straight across the kind of, uh, the main Dale Street area there. Uh, there'll be no, there will be, uh, no cookout, we're talking about having an ice cream park. And then the only other minor twist, I believe, was that the fire chief declared that the, the wagon or the, the trailer that is usually used for all the region apparently has been determined to be unsafe. Uh, and so the committee is looking for convertibles. For those of you who have convertible, know anyone who does, then we'd like to be in the Memorial Day Parade, but I can't do that. That was, second is the, I listened in on the MMA, uh, there was a budget briefing last Friday, I think it was, from the MMA. Couple key points on that is the unrestricted government aid officially two point seven percent, but the MMA is actually asking for a seven point three percent increase, and that had to do with the fact that the state, the rules are based on government aid, that the aid coming to towns and cities is a function of the growth in the town, in the city, uh, state revenues. And during the COVID crisis, it's actually based on the forecasted growth of the state's revenues. During COVID, they forecasted small numbers in growth. They experienced larger numbers in growth, but because the rule was the forecast, which you went by, basically the unrestricted aid to the communities and towns was artificially below what the actual revenue is. So they're act, actually going back, asking for a seven, seven point three percent increase, which would simply put that all back on track, I don't know if that's gonna help, that's what they're trying to do. Um, they're looking for an increase in chapter seven, the minimum eight, of thirty dollars a student, a hundred dollars a student, if that matters. And, uh, actually, you probably already know all of that. Uh, and then the chapter ninety funds, to the point you've been made by, to the thing that over the last eleven years, chapter ninety funds declined by eighty-three point two million dollars, but they're also pushing back, that you should get more funding than what we're getting. And I think, uh, yeah, uh, houses looking to spend outdoor dining and take out drinks from out here. It's headed to the second, you already come, and then the third thing, I just had a very active week here. Um, if, if, uh, those who are listening to this, Metfield Outreach has released their survey, community needs survey, uh, as of Monday of this week, and, uh, they're trying to get as many people to fill the survey out as they can. They, the surveys have to be completed by March twenty-seventh, so you've got to clean now, March twenty-seventh. Uh, if you take a look at the meeting agenda package for tonight's meeting, for the Sylkens meeting, and you go all the way to the bottom of it, one of the information items is the flyer that has a QR code, so if you want, you can just literally scan the QR code and it'll get you to the, uh, so they, there also will be, uh, some active efforts, uh, at places like the food cupboard and, and there will be, if anybody needs a hard copy, there are hard copies, basically. Anybody that wants it in Brazilian Portuguese or Spanish, there'll be Brazilian Portuguese and Spanish copies that will be produced as well. And it basically what's happening is part of the overall, you can find that bridge, you can get a good handle on what community needs are. Uh, uh, it, so it's, I would say that it's opposed to some sort of objective statistical analysis of looking what problems are. This is really trying to get at what people either perceive as needing down or actually have these needs, that, uh, Metfield Outreach and the Philly and New Orleans issue.
Uh, that actually filled my, my report out today. I do have some concern about the humidity, how many of the people have checked kitchen boxes, the entrance, the bedroom, the house, but, you know, hopefully. Just to randomize, we don't do all the answers, we gotta check all of the boxes. Um.
You run back.
Yeah. Um, we have a motion to close the warrant.
I move that we close the warrant.
All in favor?
I.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?